We very much appreciate that. The program tonight, I'm going to introduce the individuals from Doran Whittier. They're going to be leading our discussion. We've got several different pieces of presentation that are going to occur. There's going to be some breakout sessions that are going to occur at your tables. So we're going to be looking for feedback on some of the different options tonight. And then we'll reconvene at the end of the evening and see where we are with regard to some of the different options that are going to be for us with our master planning. So I very much appreciate you coming out tonight. I'm not sure if I said earlier on Jay Lang, the superintendent, I'll be floating around this evening as we're doing this work. The only thing that we ask as Brad and his associates start us off, if we are going to have questions or discussion from the audience, we have microphones that will actually float around because we do have a considerable amount of people that either watched at home or have gone back to watch the tape of our meetings. And if you don't talk into the microphone, they lose the question that you're asking. So then they only get the answer. So if you are going to speak, if you just raise your hand, one of us with a microphone will bring it over to you, just so that we can actually record the question and then the answer from Brad and his folks. So welcome this evening. I'm going to turn it over to Brad, and we're going to get started right away.
Thank you, Jay. So a lot more people here this week than last, well, than the last time we met. I guess it was more than a week ago. At the last meeting, I had the over/under at about 25, and today we're doing much better than that. How many people, this is the first time you've been to one of the master plan meetings? Okay, so that's good. A lot of new folks. We're not going to rehash all of the ground that we've covered, but we're going to go through, I think, a fairly significant amount of detail in terms of some of the options that were developed that came out of the master plan process. And we went over that at the last meeting, exactly what the process was, excuse me, what some of the options were. But tonight, we're going to take a little bit of a different tact, and we're going to come back and we're going to dig into those options a little deeper. But some of the feedback that we got from people was, you know, as part of the options that we've been putting forward as part of the master plan, is that what we're ultimately going to end up with? And that's an important question because we've also been talking about the process that you have to go through with the state, which is called the MSBI, MSBA rather, Statement of Interest process, where you declare what the project type is that you're going to go and be submitting for reimbursement with the MSBA. And that is very different ultimately than the master plan. The master plan is really setting the table and doing all of the background work so that you're in a good position to be able to understand what the need is because need and grade configuration are the two things that really define what project type you submit to the MSBA. You submit, okay, as part of the process that you're going to be looking for, an elementary school, early childhood, that grade level type project, a middle school, or a high school. The options that we've developed are different than that. They address the needs within the community and the schools, and they may have different types of grade configurations to address all of the different needs through all of the schools. But as you know, you have needs at a number of different schools, but the MSBA process really only addresses one school at a time. So they're different. We'll talk about it more, and then we're also going to discuss in a little bit more detail, Michelle and Jason, what those actual options are. So when I talk about the MSBA process, I think it bears a little further discussion so people understand the timeline and what some of the steps are that we have to go through. And we're at a point right now where we've done that background work. We've been working now for almost a year. So we have a very good handle on what your schools are like, the conditions that they're in, what the educational requirements are, and what the space situation is with respect to all of your schools, all of the rooms within the schools, and the number of students through an enrollment projection that need to go into those schools. So now, this first line, let's see, the first line right there, "Town vote for feasibility funds, November 2018." What we're really doing is saying, what project type do we want to submit? And this is when I was talking about elementary school, middle school, high school. That's what we're going to be putting forward as part of the SOI. And that background work, and what we're going to be talking, and what we're trying to get everybody's input on, is the starting point for this process. And then MSBA, and it's on their website, it's called, if you go to the MSBA website, it's under the "Building With Us" tab. It's a very prescribed process, and these are the steps, they call the modules, within the process, that you have to go through. We don't need to go through all of those, but what you can take away from this is that it's going to take about six and a half years from when we initially submit the statement of interest to when you actually would be moving into a building. So it's a long process. It's a very comprehensive process. And when you submit that statement of interest, whatever that building type is, the first step in that process is going to be that you have to go and investigate all the potential options associated with that. So if you submit, for example, a new elementary school, they're going to ask you to look at a renovation option, they're going to ask you to look at an ad-reno option, they're going to ask you to look at a new construction option, they're going to ask you to look at different sites, and those may or may not be all of the same types of things that were identified in the master plan. The goal with the master plan is to be able to have done that background work again and really be in a good position to be able to respond to those questions and to be able to have that information ready for that process. But the message is, you have to go through that process. So what we want everybody to know tonight is that the options that we're going to go through will not be, one, what you submit to MSBA, and, two, it may be different what comes out of that MSBA process. Does everybody understand that? Are there any questions associated with that? Because they're two very different processes, and this is the first time that we've actually gotten into any detail on that.
Just a simple question. So if we say, decide we want to ask for a elementary school, would that definitely be what came out of it? They're not going to switch it to a middle school, for example?
That's right.
So at least that is one thing that we...
That's correct. So if you submit as an elementary school project, and that's the basis of your need, that is the type of project ultimately that you'll be considering going forward with MSBA.
And if I can just add to that, the flexibility that does exist with something like an elementary school is which grades are addressed. Because the MSBA doesn't have a specific project type for strictly an early childhood center, that's one thing that you could explore in submitting an elementary school project type. You could also explore a wide variety of different grade configurations. An elementary school could be a conventional K4, like you have today. It could be a pre-K5. It could be any number of combinations, as long as the elementary grade years are in the mix. So there is some flexibility to explore lots of different varieties of things, even after you've identified the project type.
So as part, just kind of an example of that, is in the master plan study, we actually studied, I think probably somewhere around 25 options. We put forward, I believe, 17 options, and we've now whittled that list down to five options. Just by way of example, you know, option J, which will be discussed, which is the high school option with an early childhood center component to it, is one option that was looked at, but there were, I believe, four other high school options that looked at different grade configurations. And all of the options, okay, that were put forward in the group of 17 and the group of five, addressed in different ways all of the spatial needs and deficiencies throughout the district. The other thing to remember about this process is that it's a one-school-at-a-time process. So there are some options that we looked at, which might have taken two buildings to accomplish, you know, a solution. But what that means is, you would submit one of those buildings, go through this process, the building would be done in six and a half years, if we're right on the money, probably around year five, anticipating that you had that second project that you were to look at, if that was the way you were looking at it, then that project would need to be implemented. But MSBA only looks at them one project at a time. Any other questions? It's hard to believe that I was that clear. Okay, well, if that's the case, what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Jason, and he can go through a little bit more background, and then we'll go through a couple of different exercises with you tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Brad didn't introduce our whole team, but I'm, he's Brad Dorr, he's the principal of our firm. I'm Jason Boone, I'm our educational facility planner. We also have Michelle Rogers, who is our project manager with us, and we have Scott Daniels, who's one of our designers, helping us out this evening. As Brad mentioned, there's sort of two layers of information that we're talking about here. There's the master plan, which is a little bigger picture, and there's the statement of interest process, which is the more focused picture. And that's where we're trying to pay attention to tonight, this statement of interest process. How do we help the school committee, the town, the district identify which project type is preferred for this statement of interest process? Once that's done, that will have an impact on the master plan decisions because, as Brett said, one informs the other. So what we'd like to do to start, there are some dots on your table. We realize that many of you are brand-new to the process and to our findings, but whatever information you're walking in the door with tonight, we're going to take the blue dots on your table and come up and place a blue dot in the straw poll number-one box on each one of these boards. So each board represents a different project type. The one on Brad's right is an early childhood center focus. The next board is an elementary school focus. This one here behind me is a middle school focus, and the last one is a high school focus. All of these activities we're going to do tonight are non-binding, right? The school committee isn't going to act on this. It's just meant to inform and take the pulse of this particular room, okay? So if there aren't enough blue dots on your table for everyone to have one, we have extras. Come up and see Scott, he has some more. So take a few minutes, with whatever information you have with you at the present time, place a blue dot on one of these. This is not binding, absolutely not.
We're only, you only have one project. So you, just like the MSBA process, you can only pick one, right? So, and if you haven't been through and haven't heard anything about this, even better. That's going to give us a clear direction of what you're thinking.
Are there questions about the instructions?
Should you announce what a... Just in case...
Yeah, there was a question that was asked, what is an ECC? Well, the acronym stands for Early Childhood Center. In this context, it means pre-K and K together as a grade grouping. Sometimes they're attached to elementary schools, sometimes they're freestanding, but those two grades attached to one another.
Right.
That's a, the question is, what happens if you don't like any of them? That's a fair question, and if we need to have a mechanism to capture that feedback, Scott, can you get us a post-it note?
I'm sorry, are you speaking specifically about an option or a building type?
I'm talking about the option.
Okay, this is mainly about the building type that we'd like to go forward with for the statement of interest, not a specific option that's on the table?
Correct.
What building type?
I understand.
Okay.
I mean, I'm coming from the point of view that I don't think we need extra space. That's where I'm going right to the, right to the genesis.
Okay, you...
I'm going right to the genesis.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No project because the school population is going down, has gone down.
Mike, please, Mike. You know, I have a problem with picking any one of these because, you know, you're going from the point of view that we have a space problem, and I'm looking at the numbers, and we've gone from 5,500 students six years ago to 5,000 students now, and the projections through 2026 are still 5,000 students. There's some shuffling between the grades. I understand that. How come we didn't have a space problem when we had 500 more students? I mean, so I mean, I'm...
It's a fair statement, and let me see if I can address that a little bit. For purposes of our study, we're using MSBA benchmarks for things like students per classroom, right? And those may be different than what the district is actually putting in classrooms. For example, I know at the elementary school levels, there are class sizes that are higher than 23 students per classroom, right? We also know that in the district today, there are a handful of modulars scattered across the district, right? There's some at the elementary school level, there are going to be more at the elementary school level, presumably this fall. There are some at both Parker and McCarthy. And our study looked at those as not being permanent adequate educational space. And so if you remove those from the calculations, at least our analysis has demonstrated that there is a space problem in the district today, and that the enrollment projections, particularly for the elementary school, even though overall, the district is relatively flat, at the elementary school, over the next 10 years, the enrollment is expected to climb by 200 students, give or take. And so that would only exacerbate the overcrowding conditions at the elementary schools that exist today.
That is amendment crowding at the high school.
Understood.
So again, you guys be a manager and be a professional.
And again, I'm coming at it as a finance guy and as a, as a numbers guy, and I'm not a teacher, I'm not in education. And I understand this shifting because looking at the numbers, there's, again, believing the 390 births, you know, coming in seven or eight years from now versus 300 now, you know, that's a big increase. I question whether that's valid. Who, that's the future, so who knows? But I'm saying, you know, the school can shift the grade levels between the schools. There's nothing that says elementary has to be one K through four. I mean, it could be K through three, and Parker becomes, what, four through seven? I mean, so I mean, again, you guys are intelligent enough to shift that.
I just want to note that it's not only just about the increasing enrollment that we've looked at, we've also looked at the building facilities. So if you have a particular building type that you think might need work, that would be a blue dot up here. It's not necessarily a new building, it could be a renovated, a renovated building to meet the needs of the students that are there right now.
And, and as you'll see, as you'll see in just a minute, it's, the variables that go into identifying whether or not facilities should be up for consideration for renovation or new construction, it's not just about the number of students, it's the type of spaces that are available also. In many of your elementary schools, there's a number of missing and inappropriate spaces. So for example, special education is happening in stairwells, and in corridors, and in closets. And those aren't appropriate spaces for that type of learning environment. So it's another type of need that we've identified that should be addressed by some sort of building project. Yeah, Linda?
Well, first of all, I just want to allay the fears that we're putting kids in closets and stairwells. I mean, these are just larger spaces that we're utilizing a little differently because that sounds a little scary. But a couple of things, just to answer your questions. And my kids have gone through the Chelmsford Public Schools. My last one is graduating, so they've been in these elementary schools, and these middle schools, and currently the high school. Couple of things to keep in mind, that the delivery of education is a little bit different than even when my students, my children started their education here in Chelmsford. The other piece is, keep in mind that some of those elementary schools had over 600 students in them, and what was happening is that the space was not designated properly. So for example, you would have music on two sides of a curtain, on a stage, art would be on a cart. So now some of these places have designated spaces for the children to actually have a music education and art education, delivery of their newer pieces of education that we have with students. We're not lining them up in rows, we're not stage on the stage, talking to students. This is just, the delivery of education is different, and our spaces are now being utilized differently. So some of you may forget what that looks like, and I did, as I, as I went through, but then obviously I work in the district, so I know how those spaces are working.
Thanks, Linda.
We want to make sure we get your vote too, though. So are there other people who have a no-project vote whatsoever, or is this show of hands? One, okay.
So let's label that flip chart and get us...
We're going to actually record that for you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I got it.
And you had a question?
Thank you. There's something that's troubling me, though, because I found this out at town meeting, the day of town meeting, that more than half the Westland School, or the Community Ed Center, is being used as a preschool. And why is that? There's nine classrooms that we could have used, we just spent $7.9 million for 12 modules, but we could have used that in the interim because we really need to replace, I was told, when we were asked to vote for the $200,000 for this assessment committee to do the assessment of the schools, that the current modules that we had in our schools were at their end, and that the DPWs were just keeping them going. And I went to, I did go to all the other assessments, and last week was the only meeting I've ever missed. And I recall asking about the Westland School, and you finally put it on there, the second meeting, and you never discussed the modules that we currently had. And even the last assessment meeting, when we were filling in the dots to fill the classrooms, the modules were never there. And I'm very well aware of that. So now, when I sit here and think about the nine classrooms that is being used for toddlers, and I don't mean referring to the CHIPS program, and we're talking about adding on a school or tearing down the McCarthy School. The McCarthy School, I don't believe the library will be paid for in six years. And that was a project that was $32 million with the high school, and I don't believe it's going to be paid for. And that seems to be from the assessment meetings that I went to, that was a big need, was in that middle school for the science labs. So, you know, I, I know that Commonwealth Massachusetts has not mandated full-time kindergarten, and we're not planning on charging fees, so as time goes on, I don't know where we're going to get the money for it. But preschool, I mean, I have a problem with that. I consider that a daycare center, and I know behind my own home, they tore down housing to put daycare center. I supported the 129 overlay to bring business into town, and that is a daycare center. And they tore down residential homes. So I wonder what we're doing with a preschool at an elementary school that my tax dollars are still paying for. Thank you.
Debbie, I'm absolutely happy to touch on this, and we have talked about this in each of the sessions to date. The Westland School was looked at exhaustively through this process. We are required by law to provide preschool services to students with special needs at the time that they're three years old, approximately. That is what's, that is the CHIPS program that occupies between seven and nine classrooms, let me speak, please, seven and nine classrooms at the Westland School. That is not daycare, that is not, you know, willy-nilly preschool that's happening at the school. These are services that are being offered to students that are required by law, that are absolutely necessary, and whether we offer them at the Westland School or we offer them in another school in the district, we are absolutely required to do so. The Westland School, again, we looked at in each of the different sessions, it has come into play when we've looked at different analyses around the elementary school enrollments, how to best utilize the facilities going forward, that absolutely has come into play in all of these different discussions.
Microphone, please, microphone, no one can hear you if you don't speak in the microphone.
You sent me in regards to the preschool, the CHIPS you had, 15, it was split, seven and eight, eight students. I have what you sent me, but you didn't say that Commonwealth Massachusetts requires us to have toddlers in our schools.
You're asking about the Community Ed program that's in there.
Yes, because there's nine classrooms that are being used for daycare.
No, that's, that's not true. The classrooms that are being utilized at the, the Westland Schools for the CHIPS program, they service, they service... Yeah, it is for me, it was my email. They service special education students. We also enroll regular education, what we consider role model students, with those children at the program. The vast majority of the Westland School is utilized for the CHIP program, which is not going away, one way or another, under this scenario. We're required by law to provide that. What will go away is the classrooms, there are a couple of classrooms at the school that are being used for the KCC program. As we move to full-day kindergarten, yes, that will free up two or three classrooms. I'm happy to sit with you and go through the notes that I sent you, that will free up two or three classrooms for use in the building. Two or three classrooms is not enough space to provide for our needs at the elementary school level across the district. And I'll be happy to sit and, because I sent you the email, I'll be happy to sit with you and, and talk it through.
Dr. Lang, it's really frustrating to listen to you speak sometimes because you tend to move the numbers around the way it fits your argument. On this email, it says that there are eight, nine, eight or nine classrooms that are KCC and only seven CHIPS. Now you're trying to play that there are seven to nine, maybe more, CHIPS classes and only a hand, no, no, only a couple of KCC classes. And this is constant. I hear from Doran Whittier that we have one to two years before we're going to be asked for this money, and every time they speak, you jump in and say, no, it's two to three years, no, it's five to six years. I hear from Doran Whittier that we have a 10-year life cycle on these modular classrooms, and then you are telling us that it's 20 to 25 years. We were told that we were going to get 12 pods, then all of a sudden, you were remiss if you didn't ask for 16 pods. Now you're remiss if you don't ask for 22 pods. We have the use...
Laura, I honestly, I have no idea we...
I cannot understand the argument if the numbers keep changing, so could you please not do that because it's confusing to everyone? And I think if you go back to all of the meetings, you will hear the same thing I'm hearing. I didn't take these notes randomly. So please stop trying to insult the people here that have valid complaints. Thank you.
Yes, and to respond to that, no one is trying to insult the people that are here. And to respond to that, no one is trying to insult the people that are here in this building. You're pulling up an email that I sent you probably three or four months ago that I don't have in front of me to be able to discuss. I'm happy to sit down with you afterward and look at those numbers. My numbers have not changed from the beginning of this process. What you're doing is twisting the information that's out there as far as what is existing modulars, what are new modulars. The new modulars that we're putting in at the elementary schools are going to be rated for 20, approximately 20-year life. When we talk about a module that maybe has 10 years or less in it, that would be the existing modulars at the existing schools, McCarthy or Parker. Those aren't going to go for another 20 years. DPW has done a wonderful job of actually maintaining and keeping those to be functional, but they don't have 20-plus years of life left. The new modulars going in will. I think that's where the confusion comes. I'm absolutely happy to sit with you and go point by point through all these facts to make sure that we agree on the figures that are in front of you. But I'm not trying to be deceptive in any way and I don't appreciate the insinuation.
Okay, terrific comments and we welcome that. We want to just do a quick follow-up on the dot exercise we just executed. If anybody is willing, can just a few folks from each board tell us why they chose to put their dot in that particular place? Anybody from the Early Childhood Center willing to tell us why?
I chose the Early Childhood now to address the full-day kindergarten, now that we've implemented that for next year. I have a kindergartner going in next year, I have a four-month-old at home who won't get that. But now that full-day kindergarten has started, you know, where are you going to put these kids all day instead of just half a day?
I'm glad, I'm glad we picked you to make the comment. And the reason I say that is all of our master plan options assumed full-day kindergarten long-term. So it isn't only the Early Childhood Center scenarios that have that as an advantage. In fact, all of the options that we've presented assume full-day kindergarten and have permanent space to serve full-day kindergarten. How about someone from the Elementary School Board? There's four blue dots there, anybody want to weigh in on why they picked that one?
I picked the elementary school for a couple of reasons. First of all, there is a big overcrowding crunch coming in over the next 10 years and we do need to prepare for that with permanent buildings. The second thing is, reason I did is because I had an alternate proposal that I came up with where I would like to put an addition onto the center school, which is already up to code. And that would take up the classrooms that we currently need both now for full-day kindergarten as well as expand it out into the next 10-year projection. So I think that would handle our focus the best. And overall, I think if we could not put these modular classrooms in this year, we could do a better job with applying those, that money to a new addition onto the center school and just redistrict so that school's a little bigger, but we keep the K through 4 model there.
All right, how about someone at the middle school level? There's five dots on that board, anybody willing to share their reason for that one?
It's videotaped, we're going to find you.
No one wants to share? All right, well, we had lots of people place dots on the high school. Anybody want to speak about why they chose that particular project type?
Thank you. I think it's an interesting project. And if I have to look at the time plan that goes out six and a half years, plus minus X number of delays and whatnot, then I think, at least from my family perspective, that's where I could reap the best benefit. And that was my thought.
Anybody else want to comment about? Anybody else want to comment about high school?
I'm going to be very honest with you. If that goes on the ballot, I'm not voting for it. And I will also be honest with you about something else. I've spoken to neighbors, one of my next-door neighbors, he went as a senior in 1974, the year that the cornerstone was in that high school, he graduated from Chelmsford High. And I mentioned this to him, I won't tell you what he said. So I think if you bring that before this plan here, before the current voters, maybe not the people in this room, that'll never pass. Because the last time we had a day exclusion, to work, to do the auditorium for the high school and the library plus it was a few other things, it took three votes.
Debbie, can I ask you a question?
And that's what I'm concerned about.
Did you, did you vote for the high school project?
Did I?
Yeah, here today? No, right? So right now, what we're looking at, and we're trying to manage time too, is we're really trying to go and get input from people who voted positively. We respect people who did not. But right now, what we're trying to do is just solicit input from people in kind of a wide open, nobody's biased in terms of, with information. I like to say a lot of times you're not burdened with facts a lot of the time. As to why they selected this, because the next part of our presentation is going to be, we're going to get into more detail about what the various options are as representatives for the project type that I discussed with the SOI. So I think it's informative to go and get, you know, the clean slate view from people as to why they put their dot on these project types. And then when we have the discussion later, we're going to see if anything changed, right? Because we're going to do a straw poll at the end after we've had a little bit more information presented and what the various options are.
The reason I chose the high school option, it's a bit anecdotal and qualitative. Think the quality of the physical plant itself is outdated. Just listening to children, trying to get from one class to the next. The design of the current high school leaves a lot to be desired. While my children won't benefit, to put them through the lack of quality in their physical plant in the future is not right. And that's where we need the most help.
Okay, fair enough. All right, those are, we got one more? Oh, middle school person, okay.
Yeah, I'll own up to it. I have seen all the master plans and the options and all along, my favorite plan has just been the middle school. I like the idea of one, one middle school for all of the kids instead of the two split. And I know some of the plans included having a new middle school and then turning one of the middle schools into an elementary school, which opened up space, which I, that was just my favorite plan, that was my preferred plan of them all.
Fair enough. And there's.
One more.
I'm back, I like the mic. So I didn't introduce myself properly, my name is Linda Hirsch, I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, but I'm also a resident here. And my children, again, like I said, have gone through the process of going through the school district and of course, I don't benefit from all of that. But I'm just going to, of course, talk about the educational piece of high school. So we are not, we are going to use the current high school, that would probably turn into our middle school, but we haven't determined anything. When it comes to the spacing that we need, a new high school would allow us to do that as well as take care of the issues that we have maybe at the middle school. That includes labs for our students to take their science courses because our middle schools are not equipped properly for science. This also allows us to use the space that is needed at the elementary schools. And quite honestly, I've talked to many realtors in town and they've talked about other towns, it does increase your property tax. So again, I get no gains from any of this, my children will not be, what did I say? Property value, not the tax, I'm sorry, strike that right off the record.
I can guarantee you though, you were right, it's going to be both.
The thing, I have people listening behind me.
It's going to be both.
So again, I don't gain anything from this, my children will not benefit through this and they've had an unbelievable education, but that education is changing and we need to make some changes for those children.
This is, this is all really great feedback and there is no right or wrong answer here. We're just interested in where people are as you walk in the door. As Brad mentioned, what we're going to do next is we're going to take some steps through each of the shortlist options as representative of these project types that we've been talking about. Again, we're not trying to select the one master plan option tonight. We're trying to select the project type and several of these shortlist options, in fact, a whole host of other variations of each of these options could be explored during the feasibility study portion of an MSBA process. But we're going to, we're going to describe these as representative examples of what each one of these projects types could do for the entire district. So with that, I'll turn it, oh, let me talk about this slide first. Sorry, thank you. When we first started the master plan, one of our first steps was to perform some analyses to put eyes on every single building, every single space and identify what objectives needed to be addressed as part of the master plan solutions. And this is a short summary of what those objectives were. First of all, to address all of those missing and appropriate spaces that Linda and myself have talked about, including special education spaces and middle school science labs. To accommodate full-day kindergarten in permanent constructed space. In one of our discussions about grade configuration, at least the pulse in the room that day and subsequently with the working group and the school committee, thought it would be a good idea to explore the possibility of putting the pre-kindergarten with at least kindergarten, but potentially an entire elementary school. So that's what that middle objective is about. Try to eliminate in as few steps as possible, all of the overcrowding in the district, right? Another way of saying that is to eliminate the need for modular classrooms across the entire district. Just one second, Laura. And then finally, in addition to a major project with the capital improvement and ongoing maintenance to address the physical needs at every building across the district. So that's what the master plan options are trying to do. Did you have a question?
The one question I have is about the co-locate pre-K with an elementary school. And the reason I ask, I heard last week's meeting that the teacher who I know has the overcrowded classroom at Biim, she didn't recall it as being a requirement. And I, I went back to my notes and from my recollection of this discussion, it was that we wanted kindergarten to be associated with the elementary school because of all of the learning that went on with that as well as the busing. But pre-K was not a mandatory option. And the other thing with that is that if that decision got whittled down, I looked through all of my documentation and it wasn't in the public forum meetings that those decisions were made. So I think I would be concerned if that was going forward, why we made this decision.
Well, let me, let me just be clear, not all of the, just one second. Not all of the master plan options, even in the shortlist, achieve this objective, right? So no formal decision has been made to locate pre-K with kindergarten. But I think what was clear from the exercises that we did was that people felt the break should be between kindergarten and first grade, if anything, or between fifth grade and sixth grade, if anything, but not between pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. And so what that, what that meant was we looked at possibilities of attaching pre-K to a number of different scenarios. And like I said, not all of them achieved that, do you want to add to that?
I was just going to say, the teacher who spoke last week, her question was about adding kindergarten at the high school. That was what she didn't recall us talking about in the past. We did talk extensively in the spring about attaching the pre-K to a kindergarten or an elementary school or having that be part, as opposed to a standalone. We did talk extensively about that in those little working groups when we, one of the circle chart things that we did. But we did, we did talk about the pre-K working more closely and being more part of a school community. It was the kindergarten in the high school that the teacher was questioning last week. She didn't recall us talking about that, so that was the difference.
I thought that the concern that kindergartners would get an opportunity to go to school with their first through fourth grade siblings was a higher cry than the need to bundle the services. And so that was what I was trying to get through. I thought emotionally, the parents were more for that kindergarten experience as part of elementary school.
And there are master plan options that do that, right? They keep kindergarten at each of the elementary schools. But again, tonight isn't about the, you know, that we're going to talk about them, but it isn't really about the details of each one of those options. Because for example, if we were to pursue or identify an elementary school as the statement of interest priority project type, we could explore having pre-K as part of it or not, right? The town and the district don't have to make that decision today or even before they make, submit a statement of interest. The process and the documents that need to be submitted allow for that exploration to happen later in the MSBA process. So you're not committed to anything right now.
So with all of that said, what we had done, and I think Brad alluded to this earlier, is we had studied multiple options. And we had 20, 24, 25 options and then variations and sub-options of those. And they were all based on those objectives that we heard through our working groups, through our visioning and through public forums such as this. We actually do have an option that does nothing, that is our A option. That leaves your schools just as they are today. And the red indicates that the schools are overcrowded. A yellow would indicate schools that are right-fit and green would indicate schools that have additional space within that building. And you can see at the A, the status quo, the only building that we're looking at that has extra space is the Westland Schools. And that is because during our study, we only looked at your CHIPS program in that building. We did not consider your community ed space. So you do have an option for do nothing and that means that you continue to do your capital improvements from now until you decide to do something different. Our master plan is a 20-year plan. Your SOI is the first step in a 20-year plan. You get to change your mind along the line. You get to adjust to changes in your demographics and your enrollments along the line. Just because you've stepped into this path does not mean that the next 20 years you are committed to this. That is the first thing that you need to understand. But you do need to make a first step. And so the question that we have in front of us is about what's that first step? Each one of these options from D to J5 actually addresses one of these building types as its priority. So D is looking at the pre-K K ECC, thank you, as the priority project. So that would be the first project that's built. And you can see that once that project is built, there is a grade reconfiguration at your elementary school, changing those to grades one through four. And then your middle schools, we would then be looking at a second project. And that project at the Parker School where you see the darker box would be removing those modular buildings that we know have a limited lifetime span and putting an addition on that building to serve the grades five through six, another grade reconfiguration there. And then McCarthy 7, 8, or you could leave them as five through eight schools and still have two of them. But again, the goal is to remove modulars and replace them with permanent construction. And your high school would stay as it is. In option E, the focus on that building is what we're calling an upper elementary school. So if you were to choose an elementary school project, E would fit into that because it's an upper elementary school. We would build a new school that would serve grades three through five. And we're going to get a little bit deeper into each of these so you can see how many students are in each of these buildings. And then by moving fifth grade down and third and fourth grade up, you've actually created room in your elementary schools to serve pre-K through two and your middle schools to serve grades six through eight. In option H, the focus again is on, I'm sorry, the focus has now moved up to a middle school. So it would be the third board that we have over here. And by building that new middle school, your current middle schools would become elementary schools for grades three through five. Again, grade reconfigurations at your elementary schools. In I2, the option is a new junior high, so that would be grades seven and eight. And again, by creating a new space, you're reshuffling the deck here, moving kids into other buildings and actually bringing your elementary schools, solving those space needs that exist those. So every, every project that you see up here is solving the problem and providing full decay. In J5, which is what we call our high school scheme, it is a new high school, but we've actually tacked the ECC, the Early Education Center, onto the high school. So you would have pre-K K in one wing of the building or one section of the building and a new high school within that plan. In this plan, we've actually proposed that your existing high school would become a grade six through eight and your Parker School would become grades one through five, so that would become an elementary school. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Just a quick question. I don't know if I missed this. What would actually happen to McCarthy?
To which school?
The entire McCarthy Middle School.
We're not sure. So part of this 20-year plan and part of the options is that you then begin, once you've taken that first step into the SOI, you then begin to explore those options. So through feasibility and schematic of the SOI, you're exploring additions and renovations to the project that you've chosen. You're exploring how it solves the problems across the districts. And you begin to think about what would happen. Would you take that building offline? Would you use that space for the new building? Would you put kids into that building? Would you sell the building? These are all options that would have to be decided after you decided what your first step was. So what I'm gonna do is walk you a little bit, step by step, through each of these options, so you have a better understanding, because the enrollment in each option changes for the students. And if you can use the clicker again for me. The number that you see at the top, that's the number of students that we're proposing would go into that particular building. So in the Early Education Center, you would have 519 pre-K through K students. So that building is dedicated only to those two grade levels, and it would be designed for 512 students. And again, moving pre-K, I mean, moving kindergarten out of your elementary schools allows the space in your four existing elementary schools. And the Parker School, for the 750 students, that's the enrollment that you actually have there currently today. So the addition would be replacing the modulators.
And just to be clear about that, this is when we talk about the MSBA, historically has only allowed cities and towns to execute one project at a time. This would be a two-step solution. So you would execute this project first, and then as that's winding down, you start the process for this one. So the time duration from start to occupancy of the second building is twice as long as many of the other options.
What I'd like to know is, from the time you choose the option till it would go on the ballot, what's the time period? And if it doesn't pass, will we have time again to put something else on the ballot? Or is that it?
Good questions. Did everybody hear that? So we had that MSBA process slide up on the screen a few minutes ago. The town would actually get two opportunities to vote on moving forward. The first opportunity is to approve feasibility study funds. And the absolute earliest that that could happen is next spring, right? Spring of 2018. But more likely, and this is what we had on that slide, the town would have an opportunity to vote those feasibility study funds in November of 2018 for the feasibility study portion. The process to get through feasibility study and schematic design takes more than a year. And so, so we're all looking at it. The second opportunity to vote would be to fund the design and construction of the project itself. And that would be at the earliest in November of 2020. So that's the timeline that we're looking at. And then in terms of what happens if it doesn't get approved, at that point, you don't have any more options. Right? The MSBA doesn't allow the town to vote again. Right? So essentially, you would have to start the process all over again with another submission of a statement of interest, should that happen.
So the amount that you had last week, although I wasn't here, I saw the figures, it's going to increase 4% per year? And you're talking about 20, that, so the figure that you gave us is not the figure that we're actually gonna be voting on. It's gonna be 4%, four years, five years?
That's --
So how much money would that be?
That's absolutely correct. And the reason we don't project, escalate into the future, is because there's no guarantee how many years out it is. For the first, right? Even for the first vote, right? So these are, all these dollars, and we have this noted later, all these dollars are in $2,016, right? We wrapped this study up in December of last year. And to get the real cost to the town, you would have to escalate out, you're right, about 4% per year to the point of construction. And so that would be over and above the numbers that we're reporting tonight.
And so how that would work is that ultimately, you can go back to that slide, actually, is when you get to November 2020, you will have gone through that process with the MSBA. You will have gone and conducted the design portion necessary for the option that you've selected as part of that process. And at that point in time, right, you will go, and whoever the designer is and the project team is, they will impute the escalation associated with that, because now you're right on the cusp, if you will, of being able to know when that project's gonna go into place. So when you get to that second vote, where the line is there, talks about November 2020, the actual value, right, that the town will be required to fund will be known. So, for example, if you did not get accepted into the SOI process as it's currently stated in 2018, but your SOI continues to be in there, everything rolls out a year. And so you'll still know, when you get into 2021, in that particular case, that's when, you know, the project team will go and put that escalation onto the project. It really depends, Deb, on what the project is, and, you know, kind of what all of those assumptions are. And for that very reason is why we don't go and put that in there, because we just, we can't predict the future. And so right now, yeah, but what it does do is it gives you a relative cost related to each of the other projects. So while we may not know what the final number is, we know what the relative cost is of a particular option, as it's identified here. It may be different from what you put in the MS, through the MSBA process, but the relative cost comparison between all of the options at a certain point in time, because they would all escalate at the same rate.
All right. So I think I'm on, did I finish up with D?
Yes.
One back, okay. Option H, sorry. Option H is a new middle school. And again, this would be for grades six through eight, and we are estimating 1,200 students in that building. So there are different ways to design buildings for 1,200 students. I know everybody begins to think about sixth or eighth graders in that large building. But there have been designs that divide the school into wings, into halves, and those kinds of things. And those are things that you would further explore as you went down the path. And just talking about costs, the cost of the projects are in red of just the buildings that we're identifying as new buildings. And once again, your grade reconfiguration, you can see we shuffled the deck, we reduced the pre-K through two schools to about 300 students per school, and your middle schools are, become three through five.
And just to highlight here, as Michelle mentioned before, when tiles are in green, that means there are surplus classrooms resulting from this scenario that are over and above what that enrollment at the top of each tile would need. And that varies from option to option. We actually have those numbers if people are interested in what, how many surplus classrooms are there in an option. But in this particular one, that's why this box isn't checked, because two of the six elementary schools have surplus classrooms in them as a result of executing a new middle school project.
And just to be clear, what you're considering surplus is, I think, is it three or more?
Correct.
So if you have three or more unidentified classrooms, or uses for those classrooms, the space is green?
Just one other point to make consistent with all of these options with respect to modulators, right? Modulators, okay, as part of the assumption base for all of the options, is that they are not a long-term solution. They're not recognized by the MSBA as a viable long-term solution. So all of these options make the assumption that as part of the solution, the modulators will no longer remain, just so everybody understands that.
And moving on to I2, I2 is a new junior high school, and we are identifying a junior high school as grades seven through eight in this case. And once again, by creating that new space, you're reorganizing the existing buildings that you have. In this case, we're still using all the buildings. Parker School becomes a pre-K through four school. In this case, we'd, South Row, the population of South Row goes down, so that you can actually right-size South Row and actually have a little bit of extra space in that school. And the rest of the elementary schools are K through four.
So this is one of the scenarios where the idea of neighborhood schools as they exist today continues. There would now be a fifth neighborhood school at Parker, and it would be the one where the existing pre-K program at Westlands would attach itself to that particular elementary school.
So when you see the dotted line, this means that the buildings are no longer used. So the Westlands you can see is no longer part of the school inventory. And in the Parker case, it moves up to the K through four group. And then finally, our J5 option, and because it's J5 --
Hold on a second. Question.
I see on there that the Parker has an asterisk next to it?
Yes.
But there's no estimate about a recommended budget for that.
Yeah, so the asterisk refers to making some adjustments to that building to serve the pre-K population, right? They're littler kids. That was designed for bigger kids. And so those numbers associated with that, we've identified in our study, we just haven't put them on the wall, so that we can stay focused on the priority project in each option.
And those modifications would primarily be in bathrooms, where you have to have different heights, you know, different grabbar heights. And relatively speaking, the cost associated with that is relatively small as compared to the overall project that's going and being considered.
We do have, we're gonna pause in just a minute for more questions, so if you guys can just hold on just a little bit longer.
You'll also see that for both Parker and McCarthy, we have asterisks regarding the science, when they remain middle schools, we have suggested that the science rooms are upgraded as different projects. So going back to J5, and again, because it's J5, there are four other Js that addressed high schools. This particular one was the one that rose to the top when we did our assessments of each of the options to whittle down to these five options that we have in front of us. And this is our new high school with the Early Education Center attached to that. The high school would serve 2,027 students, and that's including the pre-K through K students. So they're included in that number. Here, we are suggesting that the McCarthy School is, can come offline. What you do with it is up to the town, whether or not it is sold, or you use that space for additional fields, or something else. And the Parker School, I mean, I'm sorry, the existing high school becomes your new middle school, which is grades six through eight. Parker becomes your elementary school in this case, and that is grades one through five. So the issues that we just spoke about, having a pre-K and doing those kinds of upgrades, would not be necessary in a one-through-five school.
Let me just add to this option for those folks that are brand-new to our process. The genesis of this particular option was a result of the recognition that the MSBA only participates typically in one project at a time in a given town. And so recognizing, you know, the needs at the elementary level, the desire to locate kindergarten and pre-K together, this was developed in order to accomplish both of those things in a single project. So this isn't the only high school choice that the district could make. Again, this is a representative master plan option that made its way on the shortlist. A project like this, should it be realized, could actually be executed so that the two things never cross. They would have to be under the same roof, but you could design it in such a way that the pre-K and K children would never interact directly with the high school children unless there was a controlled educational reason to do so. Right?
And finally, we just want to come back, and we know that it all comes back to the money. So we want to bring this back and let you know that in option D, that is a two-step, so that is the main project, plus the additions and renovations to the Parker School to get rid of the modulators and upgrade the building facilities on that one. The rest of the options, we have looked at those as cost in today's dollars. So that's how much it would cost for the project if you were to do the project today.
Don't think we did. Which one? E, okay. If we didn't do E, let's go back and do E.
Oh, maybe we didn't. So E is a new upper elementary school. I think I did do this one. So again, elementary, even, elementary does not have to be pre-K through four. It could be your three-through-five school, and in this case, that's what we're proposing, is an upper elementary school. Again, if you look at the enrollment number there, it's 1,000 students. So we would be looking at ways to make a large school feel smaller. And there's several ways to accomplish that through the design. By providing a new upper elementary school, you could then put your pre-K through twos in the existing four elementary schools, still use your Parker and McCarthy schools as middle schools, and keep your high school at the 1,500 students that you have today. Let me just touch on the costs, and then we'll get to the questions. So the costs, we know that everybody's concerned about these. So I want to reiterate what I was saying before. It is in today's dollars. These are project costs. And so if you were to build that today, or actually yesterday, or maybe even a couple months ago, that's what it would have cost for each of these projects to come all the way through and be through fruition.
And while these are all in project cost, should any of them be executed in partnership with the MSBA, the town would not be picking up the full amount that's depicted here on the screen. The MSBA would be reimbursing some percentage of that, although we don't know what that number is. In round terms, it's around 50% as a starting point. Right? So the cost to the town in each one of these is less than what's being shown up there.
And then finally, we just want to bring you back and remind you of all, click, click, all the options that we have on the table. Now we can ask the questions.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. First one is, if we were to go forward with any of the options other than the new high school, I guess, is there, to me, I would feel like a new high school is inevitable, like we need that down the road. And looking at the current shape of the high school, is there any, I know you can't predict the future, but if we don't go forward with a new high school, which again, I'm not even sure my belief on any of these projects yet, but I just question, if we don't go forward with a new high school, are we creating a bigger problem for ourselves? Because eventually, we're going to need a new high school. Because it's, right, it's, right, it's just such a big part of our town.
As it turns out, with the exception of the center school, and Gary, are you still in the room? Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong on this. The high school is actually the youngest of the rest of the buildings in the district. So you could make this statement actually about any of the schools in the district, with the exception of center school, which was touched recently, that over the next 50 years, more than one something is probably gonna have to happen, right? In order to make those buildings survive that long. So whether you do the high school now, or do the high school later, you do an elementary school now, or do an elementary school later, the high school, the high school is actually the youngest of the districts, with the exception of center school. Did I get that right? Other questions about these options? Somebody run a mic over there.
Okay, as long as I was the nearest. Relative to a high school, I know the MSBA has lots of regulations. How much land do you need to construct a high school by MSBA standards? And the places you've talked about for putting new buildings on, is that, is there sufficient land to do that? I mean, the thought of not, of having a building occupying a piece of land as big as McCarthy, and somehow doing away with that, or whatever, and now looking for a piece, a significant piece of land to build a high school, which I have trouble believing we have. I mean, reading about the city of Lowell, looking for their location for a high school, and seeing what they're going through. And I just can't imagine where we can find sufficient land to do that.
Yeah, good question. So there are no MSBA guidelines for site size, regardless of grade grouping, right? Elementary school, middle school, high school. And the reason that's true is because the wide variety of sites that exist in the Commonwealth. Imagine trying to do a high school in Lowell, right? Finding, you know, whatever the site requirement is, 30 acres, or 50 acres, or 100 acres. So there is no guideline for site size. What we explored as part of our process is a truth test of whether or not a high school, early childhood center could fit on the existing playfields, practice playfields of the existing high school. Right? Yes, that would display some of those grass fields that are there today, and we'd have to find a place for those. But in that truth test, it appears But in that truth test, it appears that that size building, and parking, and driveways, and all of that would fit on that particular spot. It doesn't mean that that's where it has to go, it's just where we truth-tested this idea in the district. As part of the feasibility study process, the town has an opportunity to explore lots of other sites, right? Including renovating and adding on to the existing high school. Michelle or Brad, you wanna add to that?
No, I actually was gonna comment on part of the explorations is the addition and renovation for the existing high school. So it's not necessarily that you're going out and building a new high school. You do have to explore the existing reno and add solutions.
And alternative sites. So you will be required through the MSBA process to go and reach a conclusion as to whether, you know, if it's the high school site, whatever site that is, as to whether or not that's the best one. And then the other thing to remember also is that land acquisition is not a reimbursable expense through the MSBA. So typically, what ends up happening is you try and work with what you have, if you possibly can.
Okay, so... But if one were to go to renovation, or whatever, at the high school, which is quite much more reasonable, then you're not abandoning the McCarthy site.
That is true. And then you're not moving the 6 through 8. You're leaving them exactly where they are. That is an option that the town will have to explore if you go down this... Because the MSBA will require that you do that.
And this is exactly the reason why we've been talking tonight about one decision informs the other. So if the step 1 is to explore a high school, and ultimately it results in a renovated existing high school, that sort of blows up that master plan option, and now the district has to revisit the master plan to see...
Now we look at J6.
How... Right, how that was impacted by those earlier decisions.
Just a quick question related to cost. I was just reviewing the notes from the facility assessment from December 20th, and just saw that there was about an $80 million difference on Option J5. It's listed as 283.5 in that report, and it's down to 203 in the one on the screen. And just wondering if there was anything significantly different between the two? If you could expand on that?
Yep. And I'll start, and Michelle, you can jump in. Just a few minutes ago, we talked about how there's other costs associated with each one of these master plan steps. And so in this particular case, part of that additional money was to do a little bit of work at the existing high school to make it ready for middle school children. The other part of that was to make the Parker ready for elementary school children. The district could choose whether or not to spend those additional monies. And we didn't want to confuse the issue by reporting all of those details and then say, "Well, this master plan option is $283 million." How'd it do, Michelle?
That was... That's it.
And capital improvements, right? Wasn't that included also as part of...
No, it was a separate line item, so he was not looking at the capital improvement piece of it. I'm sorry.
I definitely appreciate that as part of the response. The only thing I would add, though, is for most of those options, you know, maybe you're talking $10 million, where in this option, it's almost $80 million, and that's quite a bit of money to consider for that specific option.
Fair enough.
I believe that when we looked at the Parker School renovations, we were using the numbers as if you were going to renovate the entire building, so then you would be triggering lots of other pieces. So as we looked a little bit closer, I think we were able to take that money out and just identify just the high school piece of that. Did that... Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We had a question over here?
Nope.
You're all set? Okay.
I have a question. I just need to go back on something here.
So you said at the beginning that you... And in your objectives met there, you wanted to try and achieve co-located pre-K. I thought you said that was with the elementary. And you've got it checked off there, and yet you've got pre... In this, you've got pre-K with 912. Can you just go back on that one more time?
Sure. The reason we checked it off in this particular option is because it's at least associated with kindergarten. It's not in isolation. Right? So you're absolutely right. I did say with an elementary school earlier. I did say that. But in our mind, this qualified. And maybe that wasn't the best use of language, right? But the idea that pre-K is co-located with something at least kindergarten, right? And that's why this has been checked off in this particular option.
I believe that we've referred to Westland School as bringing pre-K on an island. They're not attached to anything. They're...
But now you've got pre-K and K on an island, so, you know.
Right. But they're together.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi, I'm just curious to know why with J5 option, why it's the McCarthy Middle School that's being taken off the table, when there's the brand-new fields, the... There's actually an auditorium, the brand-new library, you know, just... Yeah, the gym is in good condition. I mean, I know it's a very old school, and I'm sure there's more to it.
Good question. Good question.
New lockers.
What's that?
You've got new lockers.
New lockers, right. And the answer is because it's bigger. In other words, the students we were trying to accommodate, those 690 students, are not enough to fill that up. So if we were to put them there, it would also be green, but green even worse. So if you were to go down the path of exploring a high school option, when you go to revisit the master plan at the end of that, you could make that determination. Do we want to keep McCarthy? Do we want to keep Parker? Do we want to do something completely different? But that was the logic in picking Parker for this particular case, because it was a better fit. The second reason was because McCarthy was designed as a high school, harder to fit out for little guys. Parker was at least designed as a middle school, and so a little easier to fit out for little kids. But primarily because it was a better fit.
So would that... Is that, like, etched in stone, or is this still open for discussion?
Nope. No. I think it's fair to say nothing at this stage is etched in stone.
Okay.
Okay? Can you pass the microphone to Debbie right there?
I... You know, the thought occurred to me the first time tonight. Is the town of Jones... I don't remember through all these meetings, even the school committee meetings, they had spoken about full-time kindergarten, if there would be a fee, and they determined that they didn't want one. Who's gonna pay for the pre-K?
Well...
I want to know, is the town of Jones going to be paying for the pre-K, or is it going to be paid by the parents?
It... So let me clarify, and Jay, jump in.
Yeah, I should be asking him.
The pre-K... The pre-K that we're referring to in all of these options is not the pre-K that's associated with the community education program. This is the pre-K that's mandated and required by the state for the district to provide. Two different things.
So if the Commonwealth of Massachusetts does not... They have not mandated full-time kindergarten, right, Jay?
Uh, yeah.
They haven't, not yet. So how can we, as a community, plan for pre-K as a mandatory program?
We're not.
Is it for all?
Debbie, I appreciate that.
That's why I'm asking.
But we're not. This is basically reallocating the existing mandated pre-K that we're offering, the CHIPS programming. Instead of doing that at the Westland School, what this is doing is actually kind of marrying those preschool classrooms with the kindergarten classrooms in the other schools.
You're not calling CHIPS.
No, not adding additional pre-K.
You're just calling it pre-K.
This is utilizing the existing pre-K that we're mandated to have.
And well, that's what I wanted to know.
Right.
But I have another question. If we were to decide to add on, to renovate the McCarthy, to bring it up to code, to add the science classrooms that they would need, and put the 6, 7, and 8s in that school, what would the cost be? To do what they would need to bring that building up to code, to the MSBA guidelines?
We don't...
In other words, to put the sprinklers in? Because there's so much money that has been spent on McCarthy.
The... All of those capital improvement dollars are in our report. We don't have them with us tonight, and I don't have them off the top of my head. And we didn't explore McCarthy as the only 6 through 8 facility in the district, because we already know it's way too small. Right? It houses four... Half of 4 grades, and is capable, without a significant addition, to house all of 3 grades for the district.
You mean putting the 7 and 8. The reason why I mention that is because from the beginning, it was the evening of the police station, we talked about handicap accessibility, and that building does have handicap accessibility, because we just added an elevator besides, or a drop.
Well, let's not get hung up in the details of the capital improvement plan. Let's try to stay focused at a little higher level. It's really not germane to this conversation right this minute.
Okay.
Yeah, Laura? Can you pass the microphone? Deb?
To comment on what you said, Dr. Lang, if this is not addressing the KCC... Or any of the community ed programs, where will they be housed in this plan?
I can actually... I can answer that, Jay. So when we see this dotted line for Westlands in all of the shortlist options that we've presented, the assumption is that community ed would continue to occupy that facility. Right? So only the district's mandated pre-K program would move out, but the CHIPS... Or not the CHIPS, I'm sorry. The community ed programs would remain in that Westlands facility.
So it doesn't go offline? It just is a...
Correct.
We expand that out. Just to answer your question, Debbie, in order to bring it up to code, handicapped accessibility on McCarthy was very low. It was only $288,000. Handicap plus code compliance was 2.7 million. And to handle all the safety fixes as well, it was 2.8 million.
We want to continue to answer your questions, but maybe we can do that as we float around and do our next activity. What we'd like to do next is take a step back. Right? If you remember, when we first started the evening, the focus tonight was not to pick the master plan option. Right? The focus of tonight was try to pick a project type. Right? Where should the town and the district focus their attention for this statement of interest that needs to be submitted this spring to the MSBA? And what this graphic represents is how that decision would relate back to the master plan. So for an early childhood center, if you said, you know, "That's where we should focus our attention," that would shorten the list of master plan considerations to these two types. Right? Option D, which is a freestanding early childhood center, and Option J5, which attached an early childhood center to the high school. As we've been saying throughout the evening, that doesn't mean that that's exactly what you have to do. But of the shortlist options, those would be representative of focusing attention at the early childhood level. If your decision... If your desire was to focus on an elementary school level, the only shortlist master plan option that does that is Option E. Right? This is the one that has a 3 through 5 freestanding upper elementary school. Again, wouldn't have to do that exactly, but that's the kind of attention... Where this attention would be focused. For the middle school, again, there's two options on the shortlist. Option H, which is a freestanding 6 through 8, and Option I2, which is a freestanding 7 and 8. And then finally, the high school, we only have one of those in the shortlist, but as Brad mentioned earlier, we explored a wide variety of high school options. And should you move forward with this, there'll be opportunities to revisit all of those high school scenarios as part of the feasibility study process, including things like just a 9 through 12, no early childhood center at all, or an 8 through 12, right? Different grade configurations. You would have to explore renovations, renovations additions, and new constructions. You have a comment? Hold up. Time out.
In exploring that high school option without the ECC component, leaving the preschool, the CHIPS, where it stands, incorporating the kindergartens at their district school, how much does that lower the price of that high school project?
It lowers the price.
That's the answer I wanted. Thank you, Michelle. That's all I wanted to know.
And I think that that information we actually have developed as part of, you know, the overall master plan, and it's in the pricing appendix. We can get back to you on that. We just don't have it with us tonight.
It's actually not included in the master plan at this point in time, but it's information that we can provide, because it's not one of the options.
So the next activity we'd like to do, we realize that all of these scenarios have different advantages and disadvantages. And if we were to try to enumerate what those might be, they would likely be very different than what you think the advantages and disadvantages are. So what we'd like you to do is think about at this level, at the project type level, what are the advantages and disadvantages of each one of these scenarios? And the way we're gonna capture that information is we're gonna do what's called a cafe-style round robin exercise. So everybody, we're gonna have two sets of boards set up. We're actually gonna set up a second set of boards in the back of the room. In small groups, maybe in your table groups, we'd like each one to go to one station to start. In the first round, we're gonna give everybody 10 minutes to discuss at the board what you think the advantages and disadvantages of that project type are, and document them on the board. Then you're gonna rotate to the next one. Right? We'll move clockwise around the room. You're gonna read what the previous group wrote, and if you agree with it, you know, you put a check mark next to it. If you have something new, you're gonna document that. Okay? Well, the second round and all subsequent rounds will be five minutes. So in about a half hour, we'll move through all... We'll give everybody the opportunity to weigh in on all four project types. Right? Then we'll have everybody sit down, and we'll go through, and we'll try to highlight what the commonalities are of each of the project types. Are there any questions about what we're getting ready to do? So it'll be a little bit of chaos, I'm sure, but it will work out, I promise.
It'll fall down.
More details? Can you look at?
There are no more details. Only... Only what we've presented tonight. We can certainly put up on the board this. But keep in mind, right? Try to keep in mind that we're not talking about advantages and disadvantages of the individual options, right? Only of the project type, a little higher-level thinking. If, you know, some of those creep in, that's okay, but that's not where we're trying to focus our attention. All right? I don't know that there's a good way to, you know, point people in a particular direction, but we've got eight stations set up. If everybody could move to one... There's actually four stations laying flat on the tables in the back. If everyone could move to one of those eight stations... We'll give you until 10 till to do this first round.
And you have markers that are on your tables, right? So you might want to bring those up to the boards as well.
We were catching up. We're having a board meeting.
Okay, if we could have everybody return to their seats, please. And Dorn Whittier folks, if you could grab a couple of microphones. We've got lots of comments on the wall. And we appreciate you sticking around. Uh, we're getting, we're getting close. We're getting close to the end. If the Dorn Whittier folks could help me out here, rather than us going through and trying to summarize all of these, I'd like to ask you what you saw, what were the highlights? And maybe some folks that haven't spoken yet tonight. I'm looking at some folks over in that corner of the room over there. Yeah, here's one, Michelle, right here. Oh. What observations do you see in the advantages and disadvantages that were documented up there?
I was a proponent, I was a proponent of high school, when I looked at the comments that some of the other people made. Most salient argument is the age and ability of the building, is the age and the technology inside the building. Because that's the last stop for our students before they go out to the real world. And the greatest and the greatest in technology and modernization needs to be there, not at the middle school. I wish I had said that, but it was somebody else who lied. But that struck me, going anything of all, that's the last stop for our students. Right now, they have one of the worst, well, I gotta give them the best in 15 years.
So if I, if I can try to paraphrase that, all of the buildings in the districts could benefit from improved technology. But if we only get sort of one shot at this in the next decade, let's do it at the high school, because we know everybody's gonna hit the high school, and it's gonna be the last thing they experience before they head out into the real world.
And that to prepare with the technology.
And that would help, that would help prepare them for the, for the future. Okay, what else did, did folks see? Yes.
So I made a comment about the elementary school. There wasn't necessarily anything that I disliked about the elementary school, just from the perspective of a kid going through. The one thing that I didn't care for is the concept that all the students go to the same school for about two years, only to get separated for another two years, and then go back to the same high school. I think just, if I were a student going through that experience, that's probably something that I wouldn't really like, is getting separated from some of my friends for two years. So just, you know, kind of looking at it from a different perspective.
Sure. This is the notion where in the current grade configuration, the entire district doesn't come together until ninth grade. Right? But in that scenario, they come together early in their education career, and then they're separated again, and then they're back together again later in their educational career. And that feels a little awkward.
Yeah, it was actually something that I did like about the two different configurations that were proposed for the middle school, is from roughly about sixth grade on, everyone is basically together. Regardless of the two situations that you guys have currently proposed. You get to be with your peers for about six years as opposed to four.
Okay, good. Yes.
One of the things that I noticed is that there's a lot of support for providing a benefit to the high school level. And I think a lot of people might have been putting advantages on the J five option. But it's also clear that there's a lot of sentiment that we don't want to waste the potential and investments at the McCarthy School. So I feel like there's a gap in terms of informing the public about how additional options, A through I two, could have a positive impact at the high school level, while maintaining the potential of the investments that have been made at McCarthy, only because it's not a linear, it's not a linear decision, right? You don't just say, well, we wanna make an investment at the high school level, so we gotta go with option J five. Well, that's a $200 million investment. If we use the rule of thumb of a 50% reimbursement from the state, it's a $100 million investment from the town. Well, if I compare that to another option that only costs $100 million, and it's a $50 million commitment from the town, well, if we were prepared to invest $100 million, is it adequate enough to invest at the high school level to bring the education systems and everything else up to the 21st century? If they're saying that that's the newest building, I don't know, it doesn't seem like anybody knows yet, what type of investment would be needed to invest in the high school to bring it up to today's standards?
The existing high school you're talking about?
Right.
There is a capital improvement number that exists for that that would bring it up to current code. Right, improve all of the infrastructure systems. The number that we're representing for option J five is based on new construction.
A whole new school, I understand.
Correct. And so as part of the feasibility study process, you could explore renovating the existing high school and see if there's any cost savings associated with that. You wanna add, Michelle?
Yeah, so I just, I think there might have been a little bit of confusion. I was looking at some of the comments that have been made. When we asked you to put your advantages and disadvantages, it was based on the building type and not actually on an option. So in this case, you may choose the high school, right? And do additions and renovations, and keep six through eight at McCarthy. That could be an option. And that's an option that you would explore in your feasibility and schematic design. And just to touch back on the capital improvements, didn't actually address the 21st century learning, it addressed capital building improvements. The educational improvements would be something else that you would have to explore within the building.
But aren't, I mean, you were the specific person that explained that the challenges that we're trying to solve are capacity challenges at the elementary level.
Yep.
And quality of learning, or quality of facilities, if you will, or, or, or resources at the upper grade levels, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the master plan solves those, the capital improvement doesn't. So capital improvement only is up there. It doesn't, it just maintains your facilities. That's option A. And we are trying to solve the overcrowding or, that you see in those elementary schools, the, the red boxes over there, and all of the options do that. You just have to choose which one you want to go forward with based on the building type.
I'm, I'm getting a sense we didn't answer your question.
Am I the only one, though?
I, I'll say it again, I very much agree with what you said. It seems to me that a big proponent for the high school is property value. And unless everybody's gonna sell their house as soon as a project's done, I think as a town, it's better to solve the overcrowding and overall, your education for the kids. I think it's a bigger selling point if you have the number five, number one high school in its city than just the new building. So if all of them solve the overcrowding issue, it seems like that we would have money to improve the technology, if that's the other big issue. You know, it's, if it's computers and, you know, wiring for all the technology, that's not a $100 million project, I don't know what it would be. But I, I, I think that we are solving the overcrowding problem with any option that we have. If, if we wanna go with the shiny high school option, $200 million, and we have a lot of excess of space, I mean, every building is gonna have two to three unused classrooms. Do we need that new building? Can we improve it for the students and lift their education and technologies without an entire new building? I think, I think the property value is a little overrated. I mean, unless you're just gonna skip town.
So, so, so again, just to be clear, if the town identifies the high school grade grouping as the focus of attention for this statement of interest, there's no requirement that what falls out of that is a new high school?
I, I think that was the important point that has to be clarified for everybody here, because it's, the process itself, I think, might be a little bit confusing.
So the, the MSBA has two, what do I wanna call them? Overarching principles, that solutions need to be the most educationally appropriate and cost-effective. And in order to ensure that, they require all projects to explore renovation only of the existing facility, of renovation addition if the amount of students agreed to doesn't fit in the existing building, or new construction. Now, in this scenario, that would include the existing high school. But you mentioned the investment that has been made in McCarthy recently. A second scenario could be, let's speculate about returning all the high school children to the McCarthy facility and doing a renovation addition there. That's part of that, you know, looking at multiple sites scenario that could happen as part of a high school focus. Right, you'd have to, you know, think about what happens to the middle school children that are in that building while construction is taking place. But all of those are possibilities that could be explored during an MSBA process. Right, so let me say again that just by identifying a high school as the focus of attention for the statement of interest doesn't mean that what's gonna fall out necessarily is a new high school. Right, it could be a renovated high school, it could be a renovation addition high school, or it could be an, an all-new construction project. It cannot. So, so the question was, could it be a new elementary school? So this is what we're talking about. We have to identify, these are the rules that we have to play by with the MSBA. We have to identify a priority project type. And there is a little bit of wiggle room in there. Like you can pick the grade configuration. You say it's an elementary school, you can include pre-K or not, or you can include sixth grade or not. But you can't change your mind and do a high school. Right, once you've identified an elementary as the thing you're gonna focus on, you can't change your mind in the middle and say, no, we didn't mean it, we really wanna focus on a high school.
But I think you can identify the elementary school overcrowding as part of the problem, and the high school serves as a solution to that problem.
I'm just struggling with the fact that if a new middle school, just whether it's middle school or elementary, just the fact that it's not high school, if one of those solutions ends up being the overall more cost-effective way to solve, let's just say, the overpopulation problem, but the side benefit is the fact that, hey, we get to upgrade, it's free, it enables, it affords the town to invest in, you know, restructuring or investments internally at the high school. And we, but the town itself voted like, that the high school is actually our primary objective. It's almost like, you know, we, we decided one thing on this hand, but we tell the state the other, because it frees up the finances available to make the investment at the high school level. It, it just seems like a weird, not bait and switch, but a rather like a smoke show. Does that make sense? Let me explain it one more time. A lot of people seem to think that investments that need to be made at the upper, at the high school level are needed. And you said, well, that's true, and it doesn't necessarily mean the new high school gets created. Great. But you said that, but what it doesn't mean is that a middle school or an elementary school would get constructed. And what I'm explaining is, the way I look at it is, the construction of an elementary school or a middle school could solve the problem at the high school level and solve population problems at the same time. So it seems strange that while we're trying to play by the MSBA rules, are our hands tied significantly for the, what is actually the best solution? And do we as a town have to talk about it more, I guess, frankly about it to say, well, we need to frame this as a population problem in order to solve both issues, as opposed to framing it strictly as a high school issue, and then struggling with the elementary school or the, the lower grade level issues for a longer term?
Can you articulate how an elementary school or a middle?
I, I can, so.
Would solve a high school, would solve a high school problem?
Yes. Strictly looking at the budget that was listed there, if we're talking about a $200 million project versus a $100 million project, the investment from the town is halved if you're investing in a, one of the other options besides the new high school. So if you, if you're spending less on solving the population problem, do we, is it theoretical that we would have that other money available to invest at the high school?
No, I, I get what you're saying, I, I, let me just kinda clarify for a second. So for argument's sake, if we did the $200 million high school project, the town's on the hook for 100 million, and we might get a new high school out of this. If we did a middle school option at 100 million, we would get a new middle school out of it. We'd only be on the hook for 50. Would it be more economical, or would we get, you know, more projects done if we did the 50 through the MSBA, and then the town leveraged the other 50, or came up with another 50 to then renovate the high school, put money into the high school? Could happen. I mean, it's, it's certainly a discussion worth having. I think a lot of it comes down to, at that point in time, to like town finances, you know, for all practical purposes, what is the will of the town gonna be? If we did a, you know, if we got a 50 million, a $100 million project that they're on the hook for 50 for, is the will gonna be there to then still spend another 50 at the high school? If not, what do we do with the high school? Because we still know that there are improvements that have to happen there. I think all those scenarios certainly have to play out. I think one of the things that we looked at when we were doing the, the legwork on the project is, and even on some of the educational visioning workshops we did, we really didn't have money in play when we were doing that. We were saying, as a district and as a community, in the years to come, money's not an obstacle. You know, what would the best kind of setup be? What would the best configuration of grades be? Things along those lines. I think this is the, the point in time, and probably over the next number of months, where we do have to kinda look at the practical aspects of things. And even when you come down to, one of the things that was resounding through the different sessions that we had, was to sell a project, say, within our community. We really felt that every one in the community that was going through the school system, to have the best to have the best, you know, chance of kind of getting access, getting support, would have to access that facility. So if we were to go and actually just say we wanted to build one new elementary school, you know, again, for all practical purposes, what would the support level in the community be if 75% of the, the town wasn't going to benefit from that particular school? And would you actually have enough inertia to get a vote passed to authorize a bond if people weren't all going to benefit? So I know there were a lot of different discussions at the different tables about, well, you know, maybe we need to look at something where all the kids are going to, you know, feel the benefits of it. So when we looked at some of the middle school projects, again, a couple of them that kind of came off the table were because, you know, one middle school would be new, but the other wouldn't. So you'd be kind of creating this have and have-not type situation, and we were scared about that. You know, again, what, for all practical purposes, you know, would there be a contingent in town, because we're going to need a town vote, that wouldn't support that because they weren't going to benefit from it? That's why we looked at a couple of the middle school options that actually had the grade level reconfigurations, but all kids would go through those schools. Or when you get to the high school, I think one of the attractions there is that eventually in town, that's kind of your flagship school, all kids are going to go through it. So all kids in town are going to get to experience that. And I think that was the attraction to, to those particular programs. Again, I, I agree with you as far as the, the logic goes on the money piece, and I think a lot of it just is, is kind of the practical piece of, you know, what will the town support? What will the MSBA participate on? You know, one of the things, and we can touch on it now and maybe even in the next session, you know, one of the things I do think we have to be concerned with and also just be mindful of is as we were doing this different work, the notion of the whole pre-K, K center being added to the high school made sense because we were trying to find space at the elementary school level to deal with the enrollment increases. This, that's not a regular project that goes forward to the MSBA. They're not used to seeing high school and pre-K, K centers attached. So, you know, what level of issue are we going to have with the state when it comes to trying to fund a project like that? You know, we wouldn't want to put all our eggs in that basket potentially and then have that kicked out. It made a lot of sense to the parents and the teachers and the community members that were talking about it that evening because we actually had, you know, a lot of thought that went into, let's link some grade levels together. So we wanted to build a sense of community. If all of our pre-K and all of our K students were going to be in the same location before they went out to the neighborhood schools, that made some sense to us. That also allowed us to take a whole grade level out of the existing elementary schools. So that took care of our elementary school enrollment issue. But I think we have to have a discussion about how likely would that kind of a project be to, number one, gain support at the state level, which I think, you know, we can talk about, but I think would pose some questions. And then, again, for all practical purposes, even within town, how would the town feel about a high school with a pre-K and a K attached? It might, you know, made sense to the, the people talking about it, and I'm not trying to diminish that because I was part of that group, but we've seen, you know, conversations and some sentiment about even, you know, concerns about, you know, the kindergarten program. Never mind now, actually, in the community, talking about pre-K and kindergarten. So, you know, how many hurdles are we going to have at the local level and then also have at the state level that could potentially damage your project or hurt your project's likelihood of being funded? So I think that's when the practical conversation has to come into play. And, you know, are there different high school options if we're trying to kind of open up that as an option? You know, maybe we need to think about taking the pre-K, K piece off of it, you know, look at some of the other just high school options if that was going to be the case. You know, that doesn't help us with the elementary enrollment because now if we have to have the K stay in the individual schools, we've got to do something else along the line. So, you know, again, Boricca, they wanted a new high school, so they're looking at their eighth grade being attached to the high school. That was a way to move, kind of promote everyone up a grade. That might have to come on the table. But I guess the big takeaway for me was that we don't have to make that decision, you know, even now or, you know, tonight or in the coming weeks. Because if the state is going to, again, for argument's sake, the $200 million high school project, if the state is going to participate with the community on that project, they want a seat at the table to make sure that that really is the most educationally sound solution, and it's the most cost-effective. They're not going to let us, as a town, just make that decision. They're going to want to come in, they're going to want to go through this whole feasibility study with us, again, have similar forums, really vet all this information out, and they're going to want us to look at, well, does it make more sense to just do a renovation, you know, addition to the existing high school? You know, if that were the case, then, you know, McCarthy and Parker would, would stay online. They're going to make you jump through all these hoops to really find the most cost-effective solution before saying that they're going to partner with you. And I think what we should try to do is just not take options necessarily off the table and figure out which project might end up having the most community support at the same time being a viable solution with the state when we ultimately get to, get to them.
Sal, do you want to say something?
First of all, thank you very much, Jay. That was clear and articulate. I'd just like to state a couple of points that are facts. The fact is that Masbo is running out of money. The fact is, we have to get into this game. The fact is that everyone's here today because they realize that the Chumstead Public School System has a problem. So the statement of interest, this is why this is so important, is because that allows us, which is a very political process, to at least get in the running to have these intelligent discussions. So we have to come away, and sooner or later, we have to make a decision that it is important to get in this game, to be in a position that hopefully 50% of the price tag is going to be paid for. I'd like the residents to not lose sight of that. The longer this goes, the harder it is for us to get in the game. Because there's another 350 cities and towns, and I'm sure they're looking to get into the game at some point. I want you to look at option J5. And out of all the options there, you see that has the most green. That tells us that solves the most problems. Now, you can absolutely have a conversation, and I think it's important that everyone pushes back and has that uncomfortable conversation of what their opinion is. But we've hired a team of people to look at this, that this is what they do for a living, and they're able to, so to speak, look into the future and give us great advice. Now, if you look at option five, you clearly see that solves a lot of our problems from pre-K to K to a brand-new high school, but it also does something else. It helps eliminate some of your expenses when you talk about taking McCarthy offline. So not only are we talking about getting a reimbursement from the state of Massachusetts, so to speak, we're talking about solving all our problems, not just for one particular school, whether it's a middle school or an elementary, but we're talking pre-K, K, the high school. We're even talking about putting fifth graders back where they belong in the elementary schools. Taking McCarthy, which will reduce expenses, offline. Now, who is really the person that deserves the credit is Paul Cohen by coming up with an idea, which is this: what is the value to the town of Chumstead that owns this real estate if McCarthy was to come offline and put on the market today? Now, as a developer, I can, I can tell you specifically that that is a highly sought-after site, which I promise you will help reduce the taxes and the burden of this project. That's the only concept that allows you to do that. Now, make no mistake about it, I'm not advocating the taking off McCarthy for the development purposes, nor would I ever imagine that my organization would have anything to do other than to educate you that there is real value in taking McCarthy offline, reducing the expenses, and allowing Paul Cohen to put that out to bid to maximize the revenue. Because we always talk about what opportunities can we have in our town to create revenue? J5 is the only opportunity that creates revenue, solves most of our problems, and it does one more thing, and a lot of people have discussed this. Whenever you look at a community and you look at their education, your eyes are instantly drawn to what the high school is like, for better or for worse. It's the flagship. It's what everybody looks at. And right now, the surrounding communities continue to invest in high schools. The surrounding communities continue to prosper. This will be an opportunity for us to be able to showcase a brand-new high school. And everybody knows, schools bring people into communities. There's a reason why people want to come into our school systems. They want to move into the town of Chumstead because of the great programs we have. So please keep in mind just a few things. First, we have to get into the game. We have to wrap this up, move to a conclusion, get in the, the statement of interest, and get in front of Masbo to be able to have the ability to get some kind of reimbursement, which is very political. Second, out of all those items that this company that has no agenda other than what's best for our community tells us, the best thing to solve all your problems is J5. Also, because of Paul Cohen's idea, taking McCarthy offline reduces your expenses, flat-out business decision, and also increases your revenue by putting that on the market. So this really touches a lot of wonderful things, but the most important thing is, remember this: we have to get in the game or we'll be on the sidelines saying, jeez, we know we have an issue, that's why we're all here, and we're going to pay 100% of it if we don't make a decision. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Sal Polley, Chumstead School Committee.
Are there any other observations from the advantages and disadvantages exercise?
Thank you. I would like to hear from the teaching side of things, of which plan they actually prefer. Maybe you can get a better idea, because it seems to have been very building-focused. And then a tidbit that we learned while we had this nice session is that $100 million was ballparked to be around $320 a year per house, roughly. Someone can correct me if I got the number wrong. And you could roughly multiply that by two for the 200. I think whatever plan that gets picked, I'm sure it's going to be the best plan for the town. I just hope that we're able to execute the choice in, in a way that we won't get stopped along the way. In, in other terms, if we're going to go out, we, we've got to get the town behind us. I think investing in our kids and in education is going to reflect on anything that goes on in the town. So we, we need to really focus on the execution. And that means that we shouldn't have competing projects in the town at the same time we want to go and make the big vote for an override of some sort. So it would be great if we could, you know, execute properly.
Okay, great. Laura, you have an observation from the exercise?
I have a question. What was just said? I've been trying to follow for the last two meetings, and I'm a little confused with what one of the previous speakers just said about green meaning the best. I thought that green meant that we had too many spaces and that, based on what you said, that would make this project less likely to show need by the MSBA because they only build to what you need, they don't build more than what you need.
Yeah, so let me, let me try to clarify that a little. In our color coding system, you're absolutely right. Green doesn't mean the best. Green means it's solved the overcrowding issues and results in some surplus classrooms. So for option J5, all of the buildings that continue to serve an educational purpose would have at least three surplus classrooms, right, in that scenario. The second thing you asked about was related to the MSBA. Notice that in that option, the high school is yellow. So the MSBA would only participate in right sizing the project of focus. They wouldn't overbuild that particular project, right? They would take into consideration, as Dr. Lang was pointing out, as you consider what the most educationally appropriate and cost-effective solution is, the impact on the rest of the district, but it wouldn't preclude them from participating in a high school project if the rest of the district had some surplus classrooms as a result. Yep, over there.
Hey, I just wanted to clarify my understanding. If the town goes to a vote with whatever project and it fails, we have to start completely over?
In the MSBA process, that's correct.
So with the logic of trying to get as many residents as you can behind a project, we have to keep that in mind.
Yes.
So, in my opinion, you're going to get the most support from a high school, but if we vote for a high school and it fails, we're back to square one with, with everything, right?
That's correct.
And then all the money invested in time so far, got to do it all over again?
So this just emphasizes how important town-wide, community-wide support for whatever the direction is, how important that, that really is. Any other observations? Michelle, maybe back there in, in the back corner?
So can we clarify one more time? I mean, because we're talking about votes, we're talking about, and we're talking about plans, but you're talking about concepts on the boards. Where are we at with talking about this statement of interest piece? It doesn't mean we have to take J5 and that's what we're going to do, right?
That's correct.
It just says, we want to focus on the high school. J5's a great option, but then we'll discuss that more?
Correct. That's exactly, your understanding is exactly right, yes. So let me, let me try to say that just a little bit differently. In our master plan process, there were five other high school-focused options. If you were to get into the feasibility study process, you have an opportunity to not only revisit those as the right answer, but maybe even invent some new ones, right? So you're not locked into J5 even when you submit the statement of interest, right? We're just using that as the representative op, master plan option to talk about focusing at the high school level, right? Okay, in the, in the interest of time, let's execute our last exercise and see what the results are. I think everybody knows what that is. There are some green dots on your tables. Again, everybody gets one dot. And given everything that we've talked about tonight, we'd like to take another straw poll. Again, all of the same caveats apply. This isn't binding, this is just taking the pulse of the room tonight, right? If you had to choose a project type, do we focus at an early childhood center? Do we focus at the elementary level? Do we focus the middle school level or the high school level? What would be your preference, right? And this informs the statement of interest. This doesn't pick a master plan option, this informs a statement of interest. A question. Yep, hold on one second, let me get to you.
Just pretty simple, straightforward. In your opinion, does the community support of a high school outweigh the cost of that potential project? Does that more likely have the most backing as opposed to a cheaper option? Like, is this, all of this more worth it if we go with the high school? Or more likely to?
Can I jump in with that one? And I very much, I understand and appreciate that question. That's what we need to determine between, over the next month and a half. So, you know, we're starting the conversation tonight. We have a third session to really, you know, kind of hash that out as well, and that's what we've got to figure out. Whatever solution we end up thinking is the best direction. And again, in the end, it's not going to be option J5, you know? But conceptually, we have an enrollment issue. I, I think we can get the community, hopefully, to understand and accept that. We would like to address it by working on a project at the elementary or the middle of the high school level. I think that's what we have to come out of this with. We're not going to know until we actually go through that study with the SBA if we're looking at a new school, a renovation, an addition. That, at that point in time, we're talking a couple of years down the line, is when we actually have to go for the vote. So unfortunately, we're not going to know at that point. If we go for the vote and the vote is defeated, then yes, we're back to square one, we're starting all over again. But we really won't even know what the scale is, what the dollar, what the dollar amount is. I think my job and the job of the school committee and hopefully a lot of the players in this room is going to be, over the course of the next, you know, between now and, you know, a year and a half, two years from now, to really continue to have the conversation in the community about the need for this project, to educate people on what we're looking at now in our schools, now enrollment, what our five, 10, 15-year enrollment projections look like, so that it's not a surprise to people when we actually do have to go for these votes. So two years from now, when we actually have to potentially vote to fund the feasibility study, it's not a surprise. This isn't the first time people have heard about this. That's, you know, dollar amount-wise, that's not a significant dollar amount, but it's still, it shows commitment to moving forward in the process. Two years from then, or a year and a half from then, when they would actually have to take the big vote, and again, we don't know the scale or the, or the size of that vote. That's the education piece that we have to do within the community to get people on board, so that whatever project ultimately goes forward, this faith that that project was really the right project to go forward, that it has credibility, that it has backing, that it has a good funding mechanism to be able to provide for that, that's going to be our job and quite honestly, a lot of my job, over the next year and a half, two years, as we try to get ready for these procedural votes.
So I know there may still be questions, and we appreciate that. But in the interest of time, place your green dot on the upper boards in straw poll box number two that you would prefer... number two, that you would prefer, given the information that we've provided this evening. For a statement of interest where the focus is at the high school level. Now, like we've said before, that doesn't necessarily mean anything, it's just taking the pulse of the room, but that, at least that seems very clear for those in attendance tonight. With that, I want to thank you on behalf of our team. We ran a little longer than we anticipated, but again, the level of engagement was very high. That's important to the process, and we thank you for sticking around to the end. Jay, do you want to leave any closing comments?
Yeah, just real quickly in closing, and I know we're shutting it down kind of quick after the, the poll there. Tomorrow, by tomorrow morning, bless you, by tomorrow morning, I'll actually have a copy of this presentation up to our district website, where we've been logging in all the other documents. The school committee coming forward next Tuesday night, Dorothea will come and actually make a presentation to them, and just keep them apprised of the discussions that have been occurring. And then we still have a third session, so in about two weeks, we're going to have one more evening, and we'd really like to, again, get as many people out to continue this conversation. And I think that evening, we don't have the agenda set yet, we wanted to see what the outcome tonight was, but again, given just a couple of scenarios that seem to be the focus of discussion, I think that's when we'll have to really start to have that very kind of practical discussion about, you know, community support, community funding, MSBA support, MSBA funding. So if you really, if you can join us again for that evening, we'd very much like to, to have you here to be able to continue the discussion, and I'll get information out to parents and staff and families in the community to encourage them to, to start becoming involved. And I think a huge piece of our work over the coming months and years is really going to be that education piece, so that the community is well-aware of what we're doing, and they're provided with the information that is necessary to help them ultimately make an informed decision, and hopefully support whichever project ends up going forward to the SBA. So I thank you very much for coming out this evening, I know it's a bit late. If there were any questions that are lingering, you're always welcome to send me an email, give me a phone call, happy to have a follow-up conversation with anyone, but thank you very much for coming tonight.